We have now hit nine forty, our extended time to conclude our closed session for labor. We're out of the closed session, no decisions are being made. And we'll move into our regular briefing agenda. We have first up the sheriff's office with Chief Hanson. Chief, are you on? I'm not, I'm not seeing Chief Hanson.
I saw Cheryl.
Cheryl, are you, are you pinching for Chief Hanson this morning? Going once.
There it is, she's coming up.
There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Um, yeah, I wasn't going to, but I can.
Yeah.
He's on now, commissioners.
Yep.
Hi Kevin. Are we there?
Yep, we got you.
I had to restart my damn computer. No audio. Okay, so I'm talking about a dental contract with Bowers Dental Services. And a little historical data on dental services for inmates. Number one, it's something we have to provide. We can't just ignore inmates dental problems, especially when it comes to abscesses and things like that that compromise their health. Uh, number two, historically, we've had problems um getting reliable dental services. Because we found that most often the dentists don't want to get paid half of their billed rate. Um, and that's based upon law. So without a individualized contract, uh, we can only pay them fifty percent of the billed charges. So um, uh, we've, like I said, we've had pretty high turnover and trying to find people to provide those services. And dental Bowers Group has agreed to um take their inmates on. And um at, at the contracted rates that are defined in that uh sample agreement there. So um annually, I can't tell you what the expenses are going to be. We don't really spend that much on dental, maybe Cheryl has a better idea on that. Um, but it's, you know, I can't really tell you what the budget impact's going to be. It just depends on how many people we end up serving to the dentist, which like I said, is pretty infrequent.
Having to put down with these prices that I'm looking at here, that's not going to be that bad anyway.
No.
I don't remember ever having one of these before.
We haven't, we haven't never had one.
That's why I didn't remember it then.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's a good thing.
I think it's understanding now what you're saying, Commissioner, uh, Shooty, I think it's a smart move and I'd be in favor of it.
Mr. Trask?
Yeah, no, I don't know why we haven't done this before, so it's awesome.
Yeah, I'm supportive as well. So we go ahead and move forward.
All right, thank you.
You bet. Okay, it looks like uh we have next up our briefing items from uh the administrator, uh Mark.
Let's take it out. First, jump right into John. John's going to talk to you a little bit about parks and trails.
Good morning, commissioners. Prior to my hiring, we were paying lead pay to both the uh lead in the emergency management and lead in the park section. We have since uh moved past the lead pay in the emergency management. However, I'm asking for an additional month to be added to the lead pay for the parks, just so that I can get caught up. And we're, of course, in the middle of our applying for a grant and the, the budget, a piece of that is about six hundred and twenty-nine dollars. So I ask that that be extended until April first, twenty twenty, and then we'll discontinue that as well.
Commissioners?
Uh, Commissioner, Diane? Can you pop on for a minute?
Yeah.
Uh, did we not have discussions, uh, I don't remember, was it just us or as a commission about continuing to keep a lead at the uh, at least in the parks area, uh, because this, this manager was going to be doing more of the upper end stuff and still continuing to have a lead process uh for the employees and stuff down below. Did that, was that just a conversation or is that something that? Cause that's not the structure.
After talking with John, he feels after a month that because he's, what we're looking at is he'll be splitting his time between D E M and parks. But we're asking for this month for the lead pay. And then um Bud, who is getting that lead pay, he is a parks maintenance four, which does have some lead responsibilities in the job description.
Okay, yeah, I thought we were doing something a little different, but uh again, we have somebody that's over that department. And if he thinks that uh it should be done differently, I want to hear him. But I do think we've established a situation where we've, we've moved these people up basically into a higher type of management of their, their departments. I think we should consider uh, you know, like a deputy manager of some sorts, uh, since they've been doing it for quite a while. And they're probably still going to need to do it because splitting your time as they are, he's going to have to go for grants.
And that's something we can talk about in leadership with Mark, yes, certainly.
Okay. So yeah, I'm in favor of Commissioner Shooty.
Okay, Commissioner Trask?
I am.
Okay, I am as well. Uh, look forward to the additional conversation at leadership and that coming back to us too, great.
Thank you.
Next.
Thank you, commissioners, I have a second piece. Uh, we currently have the Mason County uh Parks and Trails Advisory Board. And we're currently uh in the process of appointing a new chair and we'd like you to support this piece. Uh, the first piece that we have is to appoint Mindy Harlow as the chairperson. And the second piece is appointing Sean Fontana as a new member to the board.
Okay, commissioners?
I have no problem with appointing, reappointing Mindy Harlow, but the appointment as chair as not is outside of our purview, I think.
You're right, the chair, I can, um, the actual parks board selects their chair.
Yeah.
But yes, we're asking for Mindy for her reappointment. And then if the board is good with appointing Sean as a new applicant. And there's also a third piece to this request. We have Mike Di Matteo on there and he's not attended for some time. So pursuant to the bylaws of the Parks Advisory Board, they voted to remove him, but we need to have the board's final approval on that.
I'm in favor of the removal. What do you think about the interview? Commissioners, I'm curious.
Oh, as far as, as far as I'm concerned, Mindy is rock star, so that's, you know.
I didn't mean her, I'm sorry, I, I bet the other one.
Oh, no, that's fine, I was adding more conversation. So um Sean, I've not met him, but his application is rock solid. So um, I don't know whether we need to interview or just appoint. You know, if we interview, I think it would just be more of a formal um uh process, just so that we can get to know him. But other than, other than that, he looks, his application is solid, so. I would be good for just appointing him.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with staff's recommendations simply because I, I'm concerned about quorum on the board. And we're getting into a situation here where we're actually, the board is working on making decisions to recommend to us. And you know, we're starting to get some synergy there. So um, I would also be comfortable with uh reappointing Mindy, appointing Sean and removing Mike uh as staff recommends.
And for me, all of the above, it, it, just with the caveat or the point that uh, because of your point that we need to keep that quorum uh going. But you know, the precedence has always been that we do interview, but we can't let any quorum lapse there. So I also agree with every aspect of it.
Okay. John, Diane, good?
Yep, we're good, we'll put it on the fifteenth agenda, thank you.
Perfect, thanks.
Yeah, that's all I have, thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thanks, John.
So, good morning, commissioners. I have the continuation of um the citizen inquiry to purchase parcel three, two, zero, zero, seven, dash, one, three, dash, zero, 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 five, zero off of Johns Prairie Road. And the question last week when I briefed was um, do we need to have an appraisal done um by an outside entity? And so I um checked with uh Tim Whitehead and um we were in agreement that the county code states that we only need an outside um appraisal if the property is um appraised by the county assessor on the website at um, at more than a hundred thousand. And the property is only um valued on the website at three thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars. So we don't need um an outside state licensed appraiser to appraise this property. And also um the county surveyor department, um, they went out and surveyed this property. And it is um point two, one acres or nine thousand, eight point two, eight square feet um on the um nineteen ninety warranty deed, it stated that the property is eight thousand, nine hundred, twenty-eight point four, eight square feet. So um, so pretty close, we're uh seventy-nine point eight square feet over what that um warranty deed states. So I want to um get direction from the board on, on what you want to do with this property. Uh, at last week's briefing, I believe it was agreed um to set a public hearing for April twelfth to surplus the property and possibly sell it. So I just wanted to um get more direction on, on what the board would like to do.
Mr. Chair, I would uh, I, you know, I'm still supportive of moving forward with the surplus. It's two different things uh regarding the sale and the surplus. I'm still moving forward in that, I'm supportive. As for the sale of the property, uh, I'm happy to hear uh how it works. That gives us a lot more leeway. My recommendation would be when, after surplus that we come up with a point two, one acres is usually big enough to do things on. I don't know the setbacks they have there for Rob, that is a pretty decent sized piece of property. You have a lot of homes in Shelton area that are smaller than that. So there are things that can be done, but with that being said, we ought to put it on the market at a certain price. Make sure that lead stays on the market for a minimum of two weeks before reviewing uh offers. So that there is no chance of favoritism or anything else or any perception of it in the public. After two weeks, we review offers and select the offers that we think are best, or at least give counters back to them or something.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Trask?
No, I, I would agree with that, it sounds, it sounds logical, thanks, thanks, Commissioner.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with that approach as well. I think uh continue with the surplus uh listed. Um, and then let that process play itself out. Richard will, Richard Beckman will guide us through and get it done.
Okay, so do we want to um have Richard set the, the selling price? Or is that something that, that we do, commissioners?
It, it can go either way, he'd give us his recommendation for the selling price and then we set it, he can't set it, we have to.
Okay. So you want him to um, to give, give us his recommendation and then I'll bring it back um to you again?
Yeah, he'll, he'll prepare a comparative market analysis for us is what we'll ask of him.
Okay.
Which point two, one acres out there, there may be pretty slim pickets, he'll have to do some uh square footage adjustments. But he's very capable of doing all that for us.
Okay, great, so I'll get back with Richard um on this and, and then bring it back to the board. And so, just so we're clear, April twelfth, we can go ahead and um keep that as the hearing date to surplus the property for now.
Yeah. And I just want to remind the commission, no matter what we set our price at, we can always come down if we choose to, if there's no, if there is no requirement by law to be appraisal, we set the price at a little high, so he comes in with an offer a little below that, uh, it doesn't hurt anything.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
So I think I'm up next. Um, I've got uh some information that I provided to you regarding an agreement that we've had in the past with Fire District eleven. So a little bit of history on that, Chief Searls is here, thanks for coming, chief. Appreciate you being here. Um, and, and please correct me if any of the research that I've done is, is inaccurate. But uh it looks like we've had a, a contract with Fire District eleven in the past from two thousand and nine to twenty twenty. Uh, at that time, the, the county was reviewing the proposal and we did not renew the contract in twenty twenty-one. I think that there were some questions about whether a fire district could charge another governmental entity for these, for, for these types of services. Uh, we did research that with our uh municipal research center, services center. Uh, and they'd said, yeah, absolutely, that, that the fire districts can charge us, uh, as long as it's in a reasonable amount. And, and you can kind of determine or, or show how you came up uh with that dollar amount. As I was looking through some of the details, I think the discussions they had in the past were um, I'll, I'll document it from an administration standpoint, uh, individuals sitting in my chair, uh, they were concerned about the um the, the, how, how would this would play out with our other fire districts, right? So we have fourteen other districts uh that serve areas throughout our county. A little bit concerned about the precedence this, this might set. And um some additional charges that might come in the future. So they looked into, what do we do for the fire districts? Um, so there's a, there's a pretty long list of services provided. Uh, I think the easiest ones to understand would be the uh, just our treasurer's office receipts, uh, property taxes for them, uh, and, and other revenues. And our auditor's office processes all of their, their payments, uh, processes all, all of their warrants is what we call them, basically checks. Uh, so they valued those services in, in the past. And I, and I think that these numbers are probably from twenty twenty. Uh, it looked like there was about twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars worth of services using our internal cost allocation methodology to determine how to come up with that, uh, provided to each one of the fourteen districts. Excuse me, did, did a commissioner have a question? Okay.
Sorry, I, I do now that you stopped. Can you repeat that number again?
Uh, twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Okay.
So I invited Chief Searls to come and, and talk to the committee, answer any questions that the commissioners might have for him.
Did the chief want to say something first or?
Yeah, no, uh, thank you, Mark and Commissioners, good morning. Um, yeah, so I guess there's a little bit about, about the contract that we have for our email services at Public Works Drive. Um, also the area that we're, we're talking about out there, there's also the, the approximately uh forty-six acres out there of, of land and, and building. And, and the services, the services that we do provide to, to Public Works is obviously the first thing being annual fire safety inspections. Uh, so our staff goes out there annually and performs fire safety inspections of the buildings. Um, the main purpose behind that is one, making sure that that staff is, is staying safe and that there is no fire hazard. Be uh, second part of that is also that, that citizens that come out and visit are also safe. And then third, also being our firefighters are safe as well. So if we have an incident out there, uh, that we know what, what we're dealing with and that, you know, that we can be safe with, with the items that we find, and those actions can be corrected. And, and part of that safety inspection as well is we actually work with staff and help them resolve those issues. So we don't just leave it for you guys to, to, to do on yourself. We will actually work with you and, and, and help you make those corrections i- if necessary. Um, also in years past, we've also performed fire extinguisher training to, to staff members out there. Those are other um training that, that, that we provided for, for your charge. And then also we do an annual fire pre-plan of the building. So that way, I, any, if we do have a major incident out there, whether it be fire or whatnot, um, we know exactly what, what we're dealing with and so do all of our mutual aid partners coming in. And so we can, you know, mitigate the incident quick as possible and uh to, to save property. Um, and then another thing that, that, that we do provide is, is obviously uh our, our department. Um, we, we work really hard to, to try to be the best that we can be. And so one of that, one of that is through our fire insurance rating. Um, we've, we've been able to lower our fire protection class. That's done, that's evaluated by a third party from the state of Washington. And so we've been able to lower our insurance premiums to, to those individuals uh for, for the fire insurance. Um, why, why are we looking for, for, for this contract? First, first thing being that uh, I just love it, we, we do not collect any property tax from Mason County for this facility. Um, this is, this is not something new to us. We do have similar agreements to other uh, to other properties and to other entities inside our, inside of our fire district. And likewise, there are other fire districts in Mason County who also do similar things as well. Being that we are a, a small primary volunteer-based department, now our budget is, is, is pretty low. And we do rely on, on tax revenue. But that being said, even though when property taxes do increase, being a junior taxing district, our, our annual budget can only increase by one percent despite how much property taxes do increase. So therefore, you know, we, we have to look for other ways to uh, to make our budget, as, as we know with uh, with goods and be able to purchase equipment and supplies. You know, we're seeing a ten to thirty, ten to thirty percent increase in those goods. Um, like, like I said, however, we, we can't uh collect any more than just that one percent. So we look for other ways to uh, to find revenue for, for our district to be able to make, to be able to afford to purchase the equipment that we need to be able to do our job. And that's just last thing I would add, I know there was a question before about how the fee schedule came, came to be. How, how we came up with the uh, with that cost of sixty-four hundred annually. And to be honest, I don't know a hundred percent how that took place, as that took place back in two thousand and nine. Um, all those individuals on our side who involved in that decision are no longer with our agency or, or even alive. So I don't know how that came to be. If I were to guess, I would believe it possibly be having to do with what the assessed value was at that time for the property and also what our levy rates um were at that time as well. And, and it's how they made that, that assumption um for the levy weight uh for the fee for services. Um, and so I guess what, what we're asking is just to be able to, to renew that contract again at the same rate that, that, that has been. I mean, i- you know, if we were looking at today's assessed value, if that was the way it's handled that they used back then, I don't know. Um, but i- if that was the case, uh, being out there public works, you know, with the assessed building value for twenty-two being just over six point six million with our levy rates, that we just shot ninety, ninety-five hundred dollars annually um over the entire assessed value, which is normal for the property at eight point one million. We're looking at eleven, eleven thousand, five hundred, being the uh, based off our levy rates. And so um, honestly, we're not looking for that, we're just looking for the, the same rate that it has been since two thousand and nine at the sixty-four hundred. And with that, I have two questions.
Great, commissioners, uh, any questions for Chief Searls?
I don't.
Chief, just a, a couple of questions. Um, one, can you walk us through how your, your insurance rates were dropped because of this? Uh, or, or how that, how that works? Um, and then just to confirm, you, you had said that you have similar agreements with others. Eric, when you're talking about those agreements, are you meaning the Port of Shelton and the State Patrol?
Yeah, yes, that, that, that is correct. We have, we have similar contract services with the, with the Port of Shelton, with Henderson Field, and then also uh, the Washington State Patrol Academy. Um, both of those entities also don't pay proper, property taxes, so we also have similar agreements with them. Um, as far as for the assess to be for the uh um insurance, and so there is a uh third part, which is called the Washington State Survey and Rating Bureau. Uh, they come out about every, every five years and, and they rate us as a fire department. Um, they look at a number of, of different things. Um, make sure I get that correct, can we? So, so the, they look at uh, first thing, us as a fire department as, as a whole, as far as staffing, equipment or apparatus or training. They also look at emergency communications with MaceCom and also fire safety controls that we have in place being fire investigations, fire safety inspections, public fire education. And so when they come, uh, they, they spend a couple of weeks here e- evaluating uh us and, and all those points. And then off of a matrix, they go back and they re-rate and, and they give us a fire protection class rating. Um, that rating is on a scale of one to, one to nine. Um, one being that you have a, a fire station basically on every block. Usually the ratings, uh, a fire protection one is like the city of Seattle, New York City, those type of places. Um, fire a, on a scale of nine, meaning that you have a station, but not, may not have a whole lot of personnel or, or just equipment there. Um, and so going into last year's re-rate, we were rated as a protection class five. And uh, and so, and then we were just informed here at the end of this last year, in the twenty twenty-one, that we improved to a class four rating. Um, and so we, we are the first ones in Mason County to be rated as a, as a class, uh, class four better in, in the state of Washington. Um, and so what, what, what that does is that because of um the lower fire protection rate, we uh citizens and business owners can contact their insurance companies and potentially get a lower uh, lower fire insurance premiums because of our, our low uh class rating. And so, 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 so that's one benefit of having the lower rate is it benefits the citizens and the, and the business owners with that. So we're only, I know that, so the third party in Washington, the rating bureau, at the, they uh go out and re-rate approximately six hundred and seventy fire agents across the state. And so we're one of a hundred and sixty that it has a class four better than the state of Washington.
And, and so how often do you get that review?
So that's done every, every four to five years.
Uh, anything else, commissioners?
Just comments?
Okay, go for it.
Uh, I personally am in favor of it. Uh, you know, I remember this coming up to us before, we did have questions some years ago when this happened. Uh, but historically, we had paid for it. Uh, want to point out that uh, this location is different than all our other locations because of the hazardous materials that are kept there. The paint, the tires, et cetera. Uh, but also that's our fuel depot and we're going to be introducing a new high-use uh, uh, property into that area as well. But with that being said, I'm also going to say that this is one of, underneath one of your commissioners' districts. I'm not sure which one, because you guys just sometimes bleed over right there. Uh, and I'm not going to go over the top of whatever commissioners in that area, you know your area better than I do on this. But you know, on, on the face of it, it seems like something I could easily support.
Okay, Commissioner Trask?
Yeah, I'm, I'm supportive as well. I know that these guys do a, a great job and um our public works facility is a little different than some of our other facilities in that it, it does have the fuel like Commissioner Netherton said. So um, and I know that Chief Searls, their department, they're, they do a great job. Um, and so, yeah, I, I, I would be supportive.
Okay, uh, there you have it, we'll move forward.
Alrighty, so we will move forward with um putting the, the contract out before commissioners to approve at our next regularly scheduled meeting, uh, which will be next week, next Tuesday. So Chief Searl, Searls, if you'd like to attend that, that would be on uh March. Sorry, I was turned to April. It looks like March fifteenth, thank you, Commissioner. Alrighty, thank you. Uh, move on to my next topic here. Uh, we have some activity on the parcels that are actually out in the same area. Um, last time I talked to the board, uh, we had received an offer on all parcels that was about half price. Uh, half our asking price. So we went back and countered with an offer to them for the full price. Uh, and to my knowledge, we've not heard back from them. Uh, we are actively working with a, a potential purchaser of lot seven and eight. So lot seven and eight are the two parcels that are actually closest to the Dayton Airport Road. Um, there's an individual that is uh attempting to develop, I think, a hotel and, and, and RV site there. Uh, they've came and met with our, our planning uh and development staff to go through kind of a pre-plan review. Uh, they've came and met with our, our planning, uh, and development staff to go through kind of a pre-plan review. Uh, and they've submitted, uh, requests. So realize, I think that, that our original one ended on January thirty-first. Um, they would have had to purchase it by February fifteenth. That has expired. Um, so there is earnest money that we've received, five thousand dollars per parcel, uh, that we are entitled to. I'll let Commissioner Netherland talk about the details of how that works moving forward. Uh, but they've submitted and requested addendum that I provided to you, um, saying that they would close on or before June twentieth, twenty twenty-two. And the final issue, and then I'll, I'll turn it over to you, Randy. The final issue is that, uh, we also had received a full price offer on, uh, lot number four. And we had gone back and asked that individual to prove their financing. And they've submitted a letter to us, uh, showing that they do have financing to purchase that parcel at the full price. So we need to make a decision on how we'd like to move forward with that. So Commissioner Netherland, can you help me out here?
So, yeah, I did it as, as, uh, was, uh, requested from the commission. Uh, we moved forward with that counter offer, and as was explained, we did not hear anything back. But when we did not hear anything back, uh, you directed me that if they were to show proof of, uh, financing, that we'd move forward with the full price offer on that other parcel, and I signed that one. And so we are in that process now. So it's already going through the processes. Uh, as for the, the original offer we had on those other parcels on the road, um, I, I wanna give a small breakdown of where we're at on that. At this point, there is no agreement anymore with, with them at all. Uh, with that, ten thousand dollars is supposed to go to the county. Uh, because they had that much down, five thousand per parcel as earnest money, that, uh, after the feasibility and everything else like that, uh, when they didn't finish their feasibility, didn't sign it off, then that money comes back to the county unless, unless we sign this agreement, uh, to extend it. Now, by doing that, that keeps that other contract alive. The money doesn't go back. But again, the goal is to close it out at that point still. But there are risks by, uh, resigning, rekeeping things going. If we were to do it, I'm not recommending that we do it. But I, I remember Commissioner Trask was very hopeful that we could maybe finish this one through. So I'm just trying to find a way to help, uh, Commissioner Trask get where she was discussing it the last time. I'm not saying that that's what you said to do. I'm just trying to find you your options. Uh, the other, another option, if you want to try and continue to keep it alive, would be to put it back on them that they were, would extend that all other, uh, feasibilities and stuff are off the table. They already have the five thousand each parcel artist money that we request another five thousand per parcel earnest money that, uh, is non-refundable if this does not close on this such and such date. This way, at least they have some skin in the game. So far, it's just been a cat and mouse about keeping the property off of the market. And that has not been beneficial to any of us. Uh, we've seen the moment that it went on the market, we started getting some action. But as long as it's not on the market, it's, there's not much gonna be happening there. So I myself am thinking that it's time just to put it back on the market. The professionalism that's needed to build a hotel, uh, is great. And I'm just not sure that we're in a, an agreement with somebody that can finish this and where else it would have already been done. So I myself am not sure that I support moving forward with it. But if we did continue to sign an extension to this other date, I would definitely recommend that we put the caveat on it that they have to pony up some more money so that they have more skin in the game and see if they want to play when they put more skin in the game. And the five thousand per parcel is a minimum, uh, which will bring the total amount they would lose to twenty thousand.
Commissioner, just a question for you on that. Do you have a number that you think would be a, a better number than five thousand? Is there?
Yes, yes. If they're truly, if they truly believe they're gonna do this and, and get it taken care of, I would like to see a minimum of ten, uh, uh, maybe fifteen, because if they really think that, that they're gonna do it, they put up the money. But, uh, at the minimum, an additional five thousand per parcel, which is ten thousand total.
Okay, okay, I'm tracking. Um, Commissioner Trask, any questions or comments?
Um, yeah, I would still like us to, to move forward with this. I know how much it costs in trying to open up a business. And it's not, you know, not just the earnest money. And so if we can work with them, I think that that would be, that would be great. Um, the earnest money, absolutely. I would, I would support that. Um, that shows that they're definitely dedicated and that they're, that this is something that they truly want, you know? See it, feel it, taste it, pretty much. So I would be supportive of, 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 uh, asking for a little bit more earnest money down.
It not refundable, uh, as I was saying, uh, uh, if it doesn't close?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, cuz that's, and what are you thinking of? Five thousand per parcel or ten thousand per parcel? What are you thinking?
So it's like, they have five thousand down on each right now.
Right now, yes.
So if we did an additional levy ten each?
Yeah.
I would support the five thousand.
So ten thousand for each parcel, a five thousand dollar increase on each parcel that?
That's what I would recommend as a minimum.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I could support that as well. I think, uh, you know, I would, I would even be interested in moving that, you know, um, June twentieth date up, uh, to May. Um, that's, you know, we're, we're still, it's three months from now. I don't know, um, you know, if that's a possibility as well. Just to keep things moving, I think that's a, a long time to keep, you know, keep this kind of dangling out there. But at a minimum, I think increasing the, uh, earnest money on each of those parcels, I would support. Um, and then obviously support the other, uh, counter as well.
Okay, so, uh, for clarity for me, cuz that was a point that we hadn't brought up, uh, what is the commission thinking about moving up the closing date? Uh, I don't know that they have an exact reason for the date that they had when, uh, Richard was talking to me. I asked him and he said that, uh, because somebody told him they had to have an end date. Cuz the earlier ones were not acceptable at all to the commission or to anybody else. I don't think we could have even entered into it. Uh, but they came up. So I don't know if their, their date is arbitrary or not. Uh, but nobody had brought that up before, so what are you thinking, Commissioner? I, you sounded like you might want to see it move up. Uh, what would you like to see it moved up to?
Uh, I would, I mean, May twentieth or twenty-seven, I think would probably be, you know, pre-Memorial Day.
Commissioner Trask, are you, uh, there for moving it, moving it up? Are you for keeping it?
Yeah, no, I think so. I think that's a great idea.
Okay, so which is it, twenty or twenty-seven?
Let's do the twenty-seven.
Okay. You agree, Commissioner Trask?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, that works.
So just to recap, before I sign anything, uh, we're gonna go back with the counter offer that we will let it open back up and extend it up as long as they remove any, uh, uh, any restrictions or sign over the earnest money that there is no, uh, uh, holdback and that it's increased by an additional five thousand per, so that it becomes a ten thousand per, uh, lot that they lose if they do not finish through. And, but it goes, they get to keep it if they actually buy the property. I want to make that clear. They don't lose it. It just goes to the purchase of the property. And we reduce the, uh, closing date to May twenty-seventh of this year.
Yeah, make sure you specify the year.
Yeah.
Mark, just, uh, if, if you mentioned it earlier and I missed it, I'm sorry. Um, but did, was that date in any way related to the site approval or the, based on any of the conversation that they had with our planning department?
So they have a honor before date in there, in their, in their addendum? So if they get, so there's two parcels that they're purchasing. One, uh, they, if they get a site design approval, um, then they would, then they would start the closel pro, the closing process prior to June twentieth. Uh, but June twentieth is the deadline. And for the other site, it was RV park approval. Um, if they got that before June twentieth, they would close, uh, or June twentieth would be the latest.
But I guess, I guess maybe the, I didn't ask it the right way. Was our, was our staff telling them that it's likely to be, uh, they would likely have a response from us in June? Or was that just, uh, it was, you know, is that something that we indicated to them and why they chose that date? Or I, I guess to Commissioner Netherland's earlier point that there wasn't necessarily any rhyme or reason to it. I just want to make sure that we weren't saying, you know, we're three months out on approval.
I'm gonna call on a friend. Um, Kel, can you, can you help me out with that?
Yes. Um, so we, you know, we tell them if, if you can meet all this criteria for, you know, under the building and zoning, then you're good to go. I don't know that we have staff say anything about a June date would depend on, are they planning on getting in all their permit, a complete application, and then have us process it and then issue permits? I missed that part on what their expectation is.
That's not part of our agreement. Our agreement has nothing to do with whether or not the permit is issued, cuz that's what we stayed away from.
So it is, it's based on an RV park approval for, I think that's lot number seven. And lot number eight is based on a site design approval.
Right, so we had indicated to them that after the pre-application conference, we'd be able to draft our notes and then state, you know, on letterhead, I, I think this was for the benefit of their lender, is saying that as long as you meet this criteria and you turn in a complete application, we'll be able to process that permit. And the zoning currently, or, you know, that zoning allows the hotel and restaurant use as well as looking at the RV park as an appurtenant to the hotel itself, not as a separate, um, you know, separate RV park. It would have to be part of the hotel, um, and managed by the, the hotel as a unit.
Okay, um, so I'm still comfortable with the May twenty-seventh, based on that.
That brings up something interesting I hadn't thought about. Are we going to add in their requirement that both parcels close? Cuz what if they decide just to separate and, and just close one? For the twenty thousand dollars?
But isn't that, is the, the contract for both?
No, uh, yes, but they're individually, you know, you can, you can, in real estate, you can drop one of the parcels.
Right, guess I didn't realize that. Um, you see that clarification?
Well, we can literally just have him include that in the addendum that he's sending back, Richard Beckman, to make sure that that's included in there. So there's no issue if that, if you tell me to. Cuz you may not care if they just do one or, or both, but.
I think both sound amazing.
Well, just based on what Kel just said, Commissioner, it sounds like they, they could not have the RV park separate from a hotel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, I think it has to be for both.
Okay, I will make sure that that is included as well. I'll call Richard today.
Okay. Everybody good? Everybody out there? Okay, great.
Perfect. So that's all I had for you, and I think you can move on to, to Mike now from Public Works.
Morning. Morning. Uh, we have a couple items on here. Uh, one is the final cost notification for county forces work, uh, for projects over ten thousand dollars. According to the RCW, we have to report, uh, advertise in the, uh, county and the newspaper for construction projects performed by county forces over ten thousand dollars. And last year, we did Homer Adams, uh, which was a culvert installation. Uh, we did two gravel road conversions, which Snyder Road and Boyer. And then we also with county forces did Highland Culvert. And, uh, that one was actually reimbursed by RCO, so this is a standard procedure, but we have to get the board to approve it.
Great. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
I'm good.
You guys are busy.
Uh, second item on the list is, uh, for the Transportation Improvement Program Citizens Advisory Board, or TIPCAP. Uh, we had an issue here recently with the, uh, terms all ending at the same time, so we're making some recommendations of, uh, perform, uh, approving a new resolution to adjust that, to make some of the terms in three-year terms and some two. We would stagger them to where, uh, I believe it says that no more than one-third of the advisory board membership would be expired in the same year, and so we would make sure we are covered. Uh, the second issue here, we'd like to reappoint, uh, Tim Lincoln, uh, Don Progriba, uh, Mark Carlson, Philip Wolf, uh, Jeff Carey, and Jack Johnson to the, back to the board. And welcome in, uh, new member Amy Asher, uh, representing transportation.
I think we all know Amy, so.
Yep.
The other ones we've interviewed in the past.
Also, um, we did that last week, I think.
We, we did it temporary for six months.
Six months?
Yeah.
And this is to, this is to go beyond this thing?
This, this would change the resolution, be able to do a three-year and two-year term, so we would,
Okay.
we would, uh, and then, and then go ahead and approve, uh, uh, the reappointment of these positions, so.
Now, just curiosity though, on the three-year and two-year term, you'll run into the same problems again, unless you, you stagger them by two and two. We'll end up with half.
Yeah.
So after the first three-year term, they, they're two years after that.
Yep. That's, that's the plan.
Does that make sense, Commissioner Trask? You're, I'm looking at the, the, I probably was clear as mud on that one?
No, come on. Well, that's the scary part. I understood it.
Okay. And how, just out of curiosity, how, are you gonna ask them or will you just select, uh, three and, and two?
I think what we'll do is we'll have the conversation. We have, we have a meeting tomorrow night, and we'll have a conversation with the, with the advisory board and see if there's any volunteers one way or the other, and just, uh, probably hammer it out there.
So then, uh, you'll bring back your recommendation for which ones, which ones on our next board meeting, so we can put on the agenda today, or?
Absolutely, yes.
I'm good with that.
Draw some names.
Yeah.
So this will be an item on our agenda for March fifteenth.
We'll have the info there.
Great, thanks, Mike.
That's all I have.
Commissioners, any questions or any items from, uh, Mike? No? Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Uh, moving into community services, Dave?
Good morning, Commissioners. Um, we'll start off with, well, firstly, the agenda is Alex. They actually was supposed to be on the action agenda, so we're gonna skip past that. That was already taken care of last, last week's briefing, and it'll be on the next, uh, action agenda. And moving on to Lydia.
Hi, Commissioners. Okay, so what I have is our HERSA Rural Community Opioid Response Program, which we call R-CORP, has a grant that we are operating with Mason Health. They are partner in it along with Olympic Health and Recovery Services. Um, and we needed to get a, a contract in place for our work with them. Um, they give us two positions, um, for the work that we're doing. So this is the contract to pull that together. It is a two-year contract, um, that ends in August of twenty twenty-three for a hundred and seventy-seven, eight seventy.
Commissioners, any questions or feedback?
No, it's good.
All good. Thanks, Lydia.
Okay, thank you. We'll put that on the action agenda for next time.
Great.
Okay, uh, good. And so the next two items really kind of, um, are interwoven. Uh, the first item I have on here is, uh, based on the commission agenda, a vote to allow Mason County Services Director's signature authority for contracts and amendments or changes in the consolidated contract. And as, as a quick review, the consolidated contract, uh, the main consolidated contract comes out every two years. And we're, right now, we're going through that process, and it's been a painful process this time. And then we got the recitals in December. So typically, the, the contract is made for recitals, exhibit A, exhibit B. We got those in December on the recitals. Exhibit A for amendment one came out in January. We got those signed with the, and exhibit B came out the first part of February. We're now on to exhibit, uh, amendment two, which in amendment two in this case is the rollover from twenty twenty-one. It's all the programs that were carried over from twenty twenty-one, but they didn't include it in the original CONCON. So they broke up the CONCON this time into new programs and then rollover programs. And right now, we're sitting here with a statement of work, which is the second, um, piece in my briefing for the rollover work, but we still don't have the exhibit B for commissioners to sign off on for that second piece. So. for that second piece. So what I'm proposing in this resolution, because this does happen. And an example within this particular statement of work for amendment two is $65,000 that just carryover, which is just now getting into the contract, but it has an expiration date of April 22. By the time we get through our system and, but Tim DOH gets it to us and we don't have it in our hands yet, we're gonna have like two or three weeks to spend the funds. So this is, this is, this has become a problem. I'm working with DOH to kind of work on their end of things to get these things through the process and to us on time. But what I'm asking for is the ability to sign amendments as they come out, their, their date changes, their statement of work changes and dollar amounts that are not new programs. So if it's a new program, it would come back to the commission, go through the process. If it's the main CONCON, comes back to the commission, goes through the process. But on these amendments come out, they have the smaller changes. I'm just asking for authority to go ahead and sign those. And then I can brief the commission on what those were.
Yeah. And didn't we do something like that before though? For, because you just bring it back for advising consent afterwards when it was a certain amount. How is this different?
Well, that we did this for pieces that went with COVID response.
Okay. So specific to that?
Yeah, specific to that. So this is, is kind of across the board because now they're rolling COVID response into the CONCON. I just want to be really clear on how this is aligned.
Commissioner Trask, any questions?
Comments? Comments. So I, I know that the, the, the DOH is overwhelmed, I guess. Even though they've hired lots of new people, they still can't keep up with what their duties are other than creating more. So that's a rabbit hole. Sorry. Um, so I think it's a good idea. I, I think I feel comfortable as long as we're being briefed so that we know what, what's, what's happening, how, you know, how, how you're doing and finances. So I'm good with the change.
I am. Again, we've already been doing this. So this is just an expansion of where it's going to be done at. You know, I mean, I'm always worried about things like this, but as long as it also includes advice consent afterwards, so that we're aware what's happened, we keep track on our, in our own mindsets, I'm supportive. And that's why we have a director.
Yeah, I'm supportive as well.
Okay. I'll put this on the action agenda. We don't have exhibit B. So you see in your, the next piece is the statement of work for amendment two. We don't have exhibit B for amendment two. So I'm, I'm asking if I can, you've got the briefing in front of you for what's going to be in exhibit B. Basically exhibit B is just a spreadsheet with the dollars and a signature page. So that when we do get exhibit B, can I take it directly to action agenda? Because it's really been brief. It's just the, the signature page and spreadsheet.
Send it to us, please beforehand. But I have no problem putting on the agenda, but I'd like to still see it. So I'm aware of it before I walk in the room to have this meeting.
Commissioner Trask? Same. Sounds good.
Okay. And the last thing, it came out at the end of last week was the state board of health came out with their proposed rules around the 1152 Board of Health realignments. Our Board of Health, I've, I've gone through this and I've had many conversations with DOH and with Salford on this topic. And I think we're, I can make some, some minor things, minor corrections to what we're doing with 1152 and will be covered. I think we'll need to add, and I'll, I'll bring us to the Board of Health and then it'll come to, to commission. Some term limits. We'll have to have some definitions on which of our categories of our current membership fulfill which categories of 1152. And we can actually probably make it a smaller Board of Health. But what I would do, I would, I'm, I'm gonna propose is that we don't do that right away, but we do term limits. And then as the term limits hit their, their termination end, then we can shrink the Board of Health a little bit, if that's what the commission would like in a Board of Health would like to do.
I'm sure if I can, a little history, we're, we're way ahead of the curve here. Many years ago, I, when I first was elected, we sat down at our very first Board of Health meeting. So it was me and, and at the time Commissioner Jeffries, she wasn't married to Rob yet. So it was Commissioner Jeffries and, and Tim wasn't there. And it came time, we had this nice room filled with people and we go through the agenda and nobody would say anything. And then we come to find out that the only two that were voting members in there was me and Commissioner Jeffries had this whole table filled with educated people. And we're the ones on our first day supposed to make all the decision. It was pretty ridiculous. We went through that a couple of times and, and finally just said, this isn't right. And made the recommendation that we empower everybody with a vote in there, the hospital districts and everything else. And you could see a big sigh of relief off of them because just having Commissioners running this thing was not the smartest move in the, in the world for the state, especially two Commissioners that had no clue what the heck they were doing. So they just had this great smile. They took it on. And I think it became a much better organization as soon as they had the ability to participate fully and vote. So I'm glad we had done that all those years ago. Cause here it is, the rest of the state's finally coming around to it. Could you imagine all the other counties that just had their three Commissioners making all the decisions?
My last board had two Commissioners from each of three counties and a mayor from each of three counties. And that, that was quite a rowdy board.
Yeah.
I'm good with it. I think DOH is still struggling with, with how to determine who needs to be on there. And so it's a, it's, David, it's a work in progress. And I think you're doing a great job trying to figure out what they're going to do before they do it. So good luck with that one. But I, I, I think it's a, it's good as far as the, so I know that they're still working on the tribal representation. It has, we have nothing to do with that. That's more of the, oh shoot, forgot that what they were called.
American Indian Health Commission.
That. Yeah. Yeah. And so that's, it's really up to them as to how that person is chosen. And if we can, if we don't get somebody, then they'll help us.
Yeah.
Maybe.
So the way that I heard just this last week, once we settle on our board makeup, we can submit a letter to Vicki Lowe from the American Indian Health Commission, and then she will help fill those two positions.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, that's kind of.
They don't have to come from the, from the tribe itself. It could be just representing them without?
Yes, they're going to work that out amongst themselves. That's basically, uh, Health Commission said counties kind of need to butt out of this process.
Yeah, I'm fine with that too.
I agree with you, Commissioner.
Oh, I'm good.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioners, that's all I have.
Anything else for Dave? Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Okay, we've reached the end of our agenda. Commissioners, if there are any items for discussion, for Commissioner discussion? Okay, with that, I would, Mark, anything else? We good? Okay. With that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I moved.
Second?
Moving to second, we adjourn. Any discussion? You're now on call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. And motion carries. All right. Have a good day, everybody.
You too.